Good evening and welcome. I'm Joe O'Connor here with EBS Newspaper in Big Sky, Montana. And this is the Big Sky Town Hall series brought to you by our publisher outlaw partners and Lone Mountain Land Company. Well, it's certainly been on everyone's mind in Big Sky, in Gallatin County, in southwest Montana, and really in the entire western US. It's hot, it's dry, it's windy, and it's early in the summer. Many of the states in the west are in severe or extreme drought. There are actually six states west of the Mississippi in what's called a D4 or exceptional drought. In central Montana, get this, grasshoppers are taking over in massive numbers. And according to a US News and World Report article last week, the US Department of Agriculture is planning to spray 3,000 square miles in the Treasure State, an area nearly twice the size of Rhode Island. Needless to say, we're in a bad spot in a lot of ways. You know, Gallatin and Madison County are two of six counties in Montana that are currently in severe drought, according to US Drought Monitor Report released last week. So what does all this mean? Here to help us unpack the situation are two of the gentlemen with their fingers on the pulse. Greg Miegarde is chief of the Big Sky Fire Department. He's been at the helm since January of 2020, but was also deputy fire chief in operations for Bozeman Fire Department for nearly 20 years and with Central Valley Fire in Belgrade. Zach Brown is one of Gallatin County's three commissioners, along with Joe Skinner and Scott McFarland. Brown grew up in Gallatin County and served three terms representing Gallatin County in the Montana House of Representatives. Yes, so here we go. Gentlemen, thank you for joining me tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Chief Miegarde, let's start with you. We had two fire starts in Big Sky in mid-June. Tell me if that's normal and let me know a little bit, let us know what we're dealing with here in Big Sky and the greater Gallatin County.
Sure. Well, thank you again for having us tonight. We did have two fire events last week, on Thursday, one on Friday. Both appear to be human caused. And it's just relative to what you just referenced in the opening, Joe, is how extremely dry conditions are not only in Big Sky, but in Montana and the western region. Where extremely dry, especially for a mountain community like Big Sky, is we typically don't see the dry conditions really kick in here until, you know, early, mid-August. And then, as you saw last year, even carries into November, we had a pretty large bottom land fire, November 2nd. And so when you look at the difference in the communities down in the valley versus mountain communities, usually we don't dry out as soon or as quickly. That doesn't appear to be the case this year. We had to shut down open burning permits basically three weeks ago because of the conditions changing so quick. And when we talk about that, we talk about high temperatures, low relative humidity, small fuel still dormant, you know, coming out of winter. All those factors come into play, and we're in a condition now that's pretty severe. And when you look at the forecast, the next eight to 10 days coming up, and I'm sure a copy is going to come up on the 4th of July, the Independence Day, it's a big concern for everybody, especially in the fire service. It's one of the busiest times every year for the fire service in general. But then when you add on top of that really dry conditions, it just amplifies that to an extent.
Thanks for that. Yeah, it's Commissioner Brown, the Gallatin County Commission held a meeting this morning ahead of the 4th of July. First off, I was going to ask you if you could just explain to our viewers, you know, what the commission, what sort of jurisdiction the commission has for a place like Big Sky and what decisions it typically can make.
Sure. No, I appreciate that, Joe. You know, candidly, I'm new to the commission. I've been here for about six months now. So a lot of those questions were questions that I had going into our meeting this morning with our attorneys and other folks who have been through more burn bans in the past. So they're good questions. One place, just to be very clear that we do not have jurisdiction, I think is an important piece of the conversation. We do not have any jurisdiction over the potentially prohibiting the sale of fireworks. So that's off the table. And candidly, that would be a really tough one to pursue, even if it were part of our jurisdiction, because so many of our fireworks stands are seasonal businesses that operate on a couple of months of revenue. And I think that it would have to be a pretty drastic situation for any government, state, local, or what have you, to go after these small businesses and shut down their businesses. But we don't have that jurisdiction given state law anyway, so that's off the table. Fireworks will continue to be for sale in Gallatin County regardless of what we do with any burn bans or firework bans. What we can pursue is an ordinance related to fireworks that would make it a criminal or a civil offense to set off fireworks within certain boundaries. And so, and what we can also do, of course, and what is more common than fireworks specific bans, and what you've seen in Madison County, for example, is an open burn ban, so banning campfires or pallet fires or and in many rural districts, I believe in Gallatin County, we have 14 rural fire districts. We were told this morning that 11 out of our 14 in Gallatin County have stopped or put a prohibition on permitted fire permits, so that they ceased legally allowable burn permits in their jurisdictions. So what we decided to do this morning, we instructed staff to prepare an ordinance for the Big Sky and West Yellowstone High Fire Hazard Areas. In our county fire control regulations, Big Sky and West Yellowstone are already designated as high fire hazard areas. And candidly, most of the public comment we received over the past week was from Big Sky and West Yellowstone. And it only makes sense, given the amount of proportionate buildings in the wildland urban interface. And so our ordinance that we have a draft of as of today from our attorneys, and it'll be up for decision on Wednesday at 1:30 here at the county courthouse, will be to put in place an open burn ban as well as a ban on setting off fireworks within the Big Sky and West Yellowstone communities. And violation of those burn bans will technically be criminal, although I think the spirit of our ordinance and really the spirit of this discussion is more educational. I think everybody in this county knows how catastrophic fires can be to our communities and our economies and our homes. And so we're asking everybody to use common sense and to really help us keep our communities safe during this pretty challenging time. And the other thing to say is it's likely to only get worse as the summer progresses. Most of the time, our rain spigot shuts off on July 1st, on average anyway. And so we will continue to monitor the situation from the commission's perspective. We'll be talking with our emergency management team on a regular basis. And it would be surprising if we weren't having a discussion before the end of the summer, if not much sooner than that, about a county-wide open burn ban.
We talked a little about accountability enforcement. How is something like this enforced? I mean, what, you know, if it's a criminal charge, you know, who enforces that? How does that happen? Is that sheriff? Is that?
What we were told this morning by Gallatin County Sheriff Dan Springer is that, from his perspective, open burn bans are a little bit easier to enforce because typically the fire is still burning when the first responder or the officer arrives on scene after they receive a dispatch call. But that fireworks and the setting off of fireworks are often nearly impossible to enforce because somebody sets off a bottle rocket or some type of firework. Dispatch times in most of our county on average are 15 to 18 minutes. And so turns out 15 to 18 minutes after somebody lit a firework off, holding that person accountable in any type of irrational way is pretty dang hard from a logistical point of view. We were told that dispatch response times are shorter on average in the Big Sky community in particular. Sheriff said, you know, of all the places in Gallatin County, there would be a better rationale for a firework ban there, from his perspective, for a number of reasons. And that, I think, factored into our discussion today pretty heavily. But again, you know, these are difficult things to enforce. And the spirit of a burn ban or a fireworks ban type of ordinance really is community education and trying to get everybody in the community to have this conversation, be fire aware and use common sense and come together to make sure that we're keeping ourselves and our neighbors and our forests safe.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. Well, so tell me a little bit, so we've got Big Sky and West Yellowstone have these burn bans in place. And Bozeman does not. Is that correct?
Not to my knowledge. That's correct.
Okay. And would that be something the commission would consider down the road?
If we were more than likely when later in the summer, if conditions continue to get worse, which we more than likely expect they will, if and when we consider a county-wide burn ban, open burn ban, that we would have to define some of the specifics and the parameters in that ordinance. So some of the details would be up for discussion, but certainly the jurisdiction of that burn ban would be everywhere within Gallatin County excluding state, federal land, as well as one other jurisdiction that I just forgot. But for example, federal land is not something that we have any jurisdiction over. But as we know, the Custer-Gallatin National Forest implemented some fire restrictions just last week. Yep. So I think we're all on the same page here. Conditions are drier than we would want. And the trajectory is not good with 90-degree to triple-digit temperatures in the forecast over the coming week.
Going to be a hot one for a while. One quick follow-up question to that, Commissioner Brown, is so, you know, I understand that you had the discussion about the ordinance today. You planned to vote on it 48 hours later, right, Wednesday? If there was a fire, if there was something going on where you all needed to step up this ban, whether it's countywide or included Bozeman or elsewhere, does that take that 48 hours? Or is there an emergency ability to make it, to pass an ordinance on the fly?
We, and I'm learning a lot of these nuances every day, so bear with me. But yes, we do have emergency authority available to us. We could declare an emergency and make shorter turnaround decisions. We chose not to do that in this instance because we didn't feel that it warranted that type of action. And we think that it's good government and transparent government to really give 48 hours notice to the public so that the public can participate in our decision, attend the meeting, give public comment if they'd like. And so we thought in this case that was an appropriate timeline and turnaround. And it's worth saying, you know, to the community of Big Sky's credit, we received a tremendous amount of public comment over the last 10 days. I believe, you know, I think it's fair to say that our phones were mostly off the hook last week. And we received a tremendous number of emails. You know, 99% of them asking for some type of a fire restriction. So we're trying to be, we're trying to respect that desire from your community. And I expect that we'll pass the ordinance on Wednesday.
Got it. Thank you. Chief Miegarde, Big Sky, as we know, partly in Gallatin County, partly in Madison. How does that work in terms of communicating what restrictions need to happen? Obviously, Madison, well, not obviously, but just so everyone knows, Madison County did pass a stage one restriction, I believe, last week or recently. Yeah, how does that relationship work in terms of fire restrictions, firework restrictions between both counties?
But again, it'd go back to both commissioners working hand in hand. Like you said, Madison County initiated the stage one last week. They are, I believe, considering the same discussion as Gallatin County Commissioners regarding the fireworks ban for the 4th of July. It really comes down to just being, communicating with the community and really getting the message out, really pushing the message out, just as we're trying to do here tonight, just educating the community on the dangers, the possibilities, what could happen. And really, when you drive through the Big Sky Fire District, unless you know where that boundary line is or really paying attention, you don't realize you're passing from one county to another. But it's really just us really pushing through media outlets. Hey, if you're in the Big Sky Fire District, Mass or Gallatin County, here's the restrictions are in place. And really just trying to keep all of our Facebook, all those feeds up and current that reflects what Gallatin County is doing and what Madison County is doing.
Got it, got it. Okay, so if someone sees someone lighting off fireworks, if someone notices a fire, what's the move? I mean, what should people do? What's the first step?
Well, the first step is call 911. Anytime there's any kind of potential smoke, fire, anything like that, early activation notification is critical for us, as it is for any fire agency. And so just call 911. We would rather go out and investigate, make sure there's not a problem versus not getting that call and having it delayed. Because that just really slows down our response times. And we have a big fire district, as does other fire agencies in Gallatin and Madison County, huge fire district. So if that's a delayed activation of notification, it really delays your response time. So number one is obviously use some common sense. But if you have an issue or you have a concern, call 911. Either a deputy will come out or Big Sky Fire will come out, will investigate it. Obviously, if there's any smoke, flame, never hesitate to do that.
So what do people face? What's the liability for someone lighting off fireworks this 4th of July?
Well, I believe Commissioner Brown spoke to it briefly. We have a very active law enforcement up here in Big Sky. I mean, the potential, I mean, from a liability standpoint, solely from the fire department side, you set off fireworks and there's a fireworks ban, you are responsible and liable. And if somebody's doing a big show, it's going to be even easier to detect who's doing it because all the neighbors, as you referenced, Joe, we've had an outpouring from the community, very firewise community, very concerned about not only dry conditions but fireworks. And we want everybody to have a wonderful Independence Day. It's not that we're trying to be the Scrooge of the holiday here, but it's about common sense and just understanding the potential volatility of all the dry conditions. When you look at what happened last year over on the Bridge of Mountains, you know, a lightning strike within a day and a half, look what the outcome was. I mean, that potential lays everywhere around Big Sky, West Yellowstone, and that's our concern. So we're just trying to be proactive in this, getting the message out. Go out and have a great Independence Day, but we're just pleading with the community. If you're visiting or living in this community, do not shoot off fireworks this year. Even the point where the Arts Council, I'm sure you saw, they chose not to do their 4th of July display. They really looked at the conditions, heard a lot of the community concerns. And I applaud them. That was a difficult decision, but they made the right decision, as did the stand that was going to sell at Lone Mountain Trail 191. They also listened to the conditions and looking at that. It's a huge fundraiser for them. It's a big hit to them. But they recognize the responsibility of not selling and what impact that can have. So huge credit to both agencies for doing that.
Yeah, certainly. Thanks for that. Commissioner Brown, what I understand, the commission is planning to hire for a joint emergency management position in Big Sky. Can you talk a little about that, sort of, you know, where you are in that discussion?
Yeah, absolutely. So we came to a verbal agreement with the Madison County Commission a couple of weeks ago to jointly fund an emergency preparedness position that would work for Gallatin County, but that would consolidate some of the planning, emergency response planning responsibilities that cross that Madison County, Gallatin County line up in Big Sky. It would consolidate those responsibilities with Gallatin County. And we so appreciate the Madison County Commission seeing the reality that we're in some respects a little more involved in some of these planning efforts anyway, given that Madison County government is further away and has a little trickier access to the Big Sky community, and they're helping us fund this position. The long-term plan is that this individual will actually be mostly grant-funded or at least a lot grant-funded. We've had a hard time accessing some fire mitigation grant money from FEMA in the past because it takes quite a bit of takes quite a bit of capacity and expertise to put together a thorough application and a program in the timeline of the federal government and then also have projects on the ground ready to go. And so we're hoping to use this additional capacity to really get a good FEMA fire prevention program going countywide. So it won't just be a Big Sky position, but a big part of what we talked about was that it would add a lot of capacity to Big Sky. As I said earlier, Big Sky and West Yellowstone are already designated as, and I said, used the word earlier, and now I must have closed it, but they're high fire, oh, high fire hazard areas designated in our fire plan, so that they would, they will be a big part of what we want to do. Last thing I'll say is just philosophically, I think we want, from Gallatin County Commission's perspective, we want to get more active in doing on-the-ground fire mitigation projects on private land as well as any relevant county land where that might, or, you know, working with state and federal partners. But we want to be helping private landowners in particular develop mitigation treatments and do work that ultimately keeps their property a little more safe in the face of forest fire. After the Bridger Foothills fire, we believe that we really have a teachable moment for the community. We had a really dramatic, visible fire that took down structures, and we want to take advantage of that teachable moment. We're, you know, we don't want to wait five or six or seven years until people have forgotten about how catastrophic wildfire can be on private land and on public land as well. So we want to get more in the game of helping implement on-the-ground fire mitigation projects.
Gotcha. Well, Commissioner, I was just going to ask you, in terms of, you're talking timelines, you're talking, you don't want to wait five, six years. In terms of a timeline for this position, do you have any idea how far off that is?
Yeah, we may be, you know, I kind of knock on wood here and don't take, quote me all the way, but we, there's a possibility that we'll be hiring someone in January of 2022. So if we can get all our ducks in a row, it could be happening quickly. And that's certainly our goal. The sooner the better.
Sure. January seems like a long way off, but
From a someone in government's perspective, that's pretty quick. I'm afraid to say, yeah.
One quick follow-up for you, Commissioner Brown, is, so Bozeman, can that, can, can could Bozeman implement its own fire restrictions if it wanted to?
Yes.
Okay. And why is that?
Well, I think specific to fireworks ban, they would certainly be able to do that. That's really their law enforcement jurisdiction and within city limits.
Is it because it's a municipality?
Yep, yep. I believe if we, for example, tried to implement a county-wide fireworks ban through ordinance, that would also impact Bozeman and Belgrade city limits and residents within those city limits. We are not planning on doing that. It would be a nightmare for our sheriff's department to try and enforce something like that. And we're choosing to prioritize our high fire hazard areas in Big Sky and West Yellowstone. But yes, I think in theory we could do that. Just keep our law enforcement, first responders and dispatch folks up all night on the 4th of July, I think, trying to play whack-a-mole with folks setting off fireworks. And the other thing, I feel like it would be a little irrational to take that step of banning fireworks countywide considering the fact that we have no jurisdiction over the sale of fireworks. So to me, it would be like banning the individual consumption of alcohol, but still allowing businesses to sell alcohol and still allowing individuals to buy alcohol. If that makes sense.
You can buy them, you can't light them off.
Yeah, it would be really, really, really challenging to enforce.
Got you. And so Big Sky couldn't implement its own restrictions. And that's why the county commission is involved. Why is that?
The, you know, and Chief Miegarde might have more nuance for that question. I'm not sure if a fire district could ban fireworks. I believe not. I believe that if Big Sky were incorporated, the Big Sky City Council or whatever it may be would have some jurisdiction to make an ordinance within its boundaries along those lines. The Big Sky Fire District does have jurisdiction over permitted burning, which I believe you all, Chief Miegarde, have already stopped your permitted burn program. Is that correct?
That's correct. We have. And Commissioner Brown's spot on. Because we're not incorporated, we have to rely on the county commissioners to implement that ban versus like municipal, like city Bozeman. They have that authority. They have a city ordinance that doesn't even allow to sell fireworks in the city of Bozeman. So there's different nuances when it comes to incorporated and not incorporated, and that's the big difference here.
Got it. Gentlemen, so there are currently six active fires burning in Montana. We dodged a few bullets pretty close to home already. It's not even July yet. In terms of fire safety, Chief Miegarde, what can people do? What should they avoid?
Well, and number one, and we've really focused on fireworks only in this discussion so far, but it's far broader than that. It's, you know, under stage one, you're allowed to have a campfire, but it's got to be in a designated fire ring. The big key there is we run on the campgrounds. People will have a campfire and leave the next morning. Don't put it out. Little basic things that people can do, making sure you drown out a campfire. Make sure you're not parking vehicles in long grass, dry grass. Think about 191 and the river and trying to find a place to pull off and do a little bit of fishing. You pull off in some long grass and the catalytic converter, extremely high temperatures in those can ignite the grass, which then in a matter of moments, you know, or an hour, who knows how long it takes, could be a full-blown wildland fire. And then just be community-wise. Again, we focused on fireworks, but just really understanding the conditions, the temperatures, the low relative humidity and the winds that we've been seeing through these thunderstorms that have come through, no moisture, lightning. There are so many things that we can do, even throwing, discarding the cigarette out of car window can create a wildland fire. I mean, it's that simple and that easy, but people don't think about that. So it's just really taking those small steps to make sure we don't have to deal with a catastrophic event like what happened in Bridger Canyon. I mean, that was a lightning strike, from my understanding, and it quickly went from a small fire to a very large fire. And when you look at the fires around Montana, it's a hardy stretch of Montana resources, very thin. And as Commissioner Brown said, we're in one of the highest fire areas when it comes to fuels that you do or deal with. And so, you know, if you live in the Big Sky community, we have a lot of programs, you know, firewise community type thing where you can create area of, sorry, I'm drawing a blank right now, where you can really create a barrier where you can
Defensive
Yeah, and, you know, do things like that, depending on materials, not combustible materials that create a safe area that protects the home. Don't stack your firewood next to your house. I know a lot of people do for convenience in the middle of winter. But, you know, that's an opportunity for sparks or embers to get in there and then start that on fire. So that's why you see this multiple structures getting lost, is these embers fly a huge direction or distance. And then all of a sudden, it's jumping over different areas. And that's what really does extreme amount of damage for residential structures, barns, anything like that are combustible. So it's really just being smart. People in this committee, I applaud them, as Commissioner Brown referenced, we've had a lot of people reach out in the last 10, 15 days. That's why we implemented the burn ban on permits. That's why, you know, you're seeing the stage one through Custer-Gallatin, Madison County, and Gallatin County because it is that severe right now.
We got a, we may have a long We got a, we may have a long summer in front of us, gentlemen. But look, Commissioner Brown, anything else you'd like to say to our viewers tonight?
Yeah, I, I really want to encourage folks to use common sense, as we've been talking about, you know, be aware, be careful. But I also want to encourage folks to be neighbors and Montanans. So I think a negative outcome of our ordinance in Big Sky would be clogging the airways with dispatch calls to our first responders as the first resort option. If that's what needs to happen, of course, that's why those resources are there. But if you see your neighbor having a pallet fire in an inappropriate place, or if you know of somebody who's planning a bonfire, or if you know of somebody who's planning a firework show or setting off fireworks, try first, try being a neighbor and going over and having a conversation with them and just being being a community member that says, hey, this isn't a good year to be doing that. And just want to let you know that this is, this is a really dry year. If you're new to the area, please consider not doing that. And there could be consequences if you choose to move forward with your firework show or your pallet bonfire or whatever. But but don't give up on that first first option of just having a conversation, being a Montanan, being a neighbor. We have, you know, only so many resources in terms of first responders. And and so we, we don't want to forget that some of this can just be solved by communities taking care of each other and having good conversation neighbor to neighbor. And and then as a last resort, know that of course you can call our first responders and they'll try and help resolve conflicts. And my hope too is that, you know, our our sheriff's deputies aren't going to respond to writing criminal citations right away in every case, right? We want to be educating the public and helping bring people along and and just encouraging everybody to be good neighbors.
That's helpful. Yeah, have have a little grace. Learned a lot about patience and grace over the past year or so.
Yeah, and folks are a little high strung after a wild year. Understandably so, myself included. So, you know, hopefully we can, yeah, just encourage everybody to be kind and patient as much as we can.
Sure thing. Well, thank you very much. Chief Miegar, anything else you'd like to share with the audience or the community?
Yeah, I mean, really echoing what Commissioner Brown said, and I couldn't think of it, it was create a defendable space around your home. You know, nice green lawns, that type of stuff. I think the key message is here, you know, go out and enjoy Independence Day, but maybe do it a little bit differently this year. You know, with the new legislation, bottle rockets are legal. You know, projectiles like that, just really respect your neighbor. I think that's a great message. And then just go out, really enjoy the holiday. But be aware that the fire danger is extremely high here as it is across Montana. And nobody wants to see that on the Bridge of Mountains happen anywhere. And I get that. So be safe, be smart, and just take care of each other.
Great messaging from both of you guys. I'm Joe O'Connor. This has been the latest installment of our Big Sky Town Hall series, one that we've been running since the pandemic struck last winter. Shout out to our sponsors, Outlaw Partners, our publisher, and Low Mountain Land Company. My guests tonight have been Chief Greg Miegar with the Big Sky Fire Department and Zach Brown, Commissioner with Gallatin County. Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you all for tuning in this evening. We appreciate it. Stay safe out there. Use caution. Let's celebrate this Fourth of July and and keep wildfires out of our backyards. Thanks, everyone, for tuning in. Until next time, take care.